Pastor Chris Bassett, what would the clerk?
Father, we are so grateful for all of the good things that you're doing in our lives. And in this county, I pray that you would keep reminding our hearts about what is good, not just the difficulties, but not just what's hard. Father, I do pray that you would give wisdom to the commissioners, give wisdom to each elected official, that they might operate with an understanding of your wisdom, not just the wisdom of this world. Father, I do thank you so much that we get to live in this gorgeous place with all of the beauty that surrounds us. We pray that it would be preserved. We pray, God, that as we grow, that the heart of this community would stay solid, that that we would continue to have the same mind and same heart that has made this place such an amazing place to live. We thank you, God, for what you are doing, that you're always good, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thanks, Chris. Follow me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the people who stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the order of agenda as amended.
Well, why don't you read the amendment?
I'm thinking about it. Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the agenda by adding Prosecutor's Office item number two, action item, discussion decision regarding the Bonner County Service Agreement to provide indigent public defense. This item is timely and must be added today also to remove the 10:30 litigation executive session as it is no longer needed.
That was boundary county.
Yeah, I'm boundary county.
It's a, we got a motion a second, while those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And when it passes, go ahead and now go ahead and submit it.
All right. Move to adopt the order of agenda as amended.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, it's time for public comment. Anybody sign up? Uh, we'll start from the top, Dan Kissler, you got three minutes. Make sure you state your name for the record, if you would, Mr. Kissler.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. This is not my cup of tea, so if you'll bear with my nervousness, I wrote it out so that I wouldn't had to have been run off on rabbit trails. Um, my concern this morning is the two acre piece of county property being considered for an RV park. I'm a retired California Highway Patrol motor officer, a retired deputy sheriff in the state of Washington, and a retired federal security contract officer. I moved to Idaho to be with so many other retired brothers from law enforcement and firefighters that have come to escape, escape the consequences of policies, et cetera, that while most likely were intended to promote good for the residents, as a result of unintended consequences resulted in complete disaster. May I use it as an example, the non-pursuit policy in Washington State? In criminals are dating police by calling 911 to report that WSP was pursuing them in violation of state law. While in no way the equivalent of putting in an RV park, the example I think is valid as to unintended consequences. My concern with an RV park is not only that in placing a permanent fixture on that site that is adjacent to an evidence facility, but it also permanently removes any possibility of expansion in the future. It may be expedient today, but the unintended consequences are that when it becomes possible to expand the sheriff's facility, it will not be possible to do so without moving the entire complex to another location. Of course, the argument is, why does the complex need expanding? Just as Commissioner McDonald so prophetically pointed out the other day, no one saw the fuel prices rising like they did, and most assuredly will continue to do so. The question then is how much of a bureaucracy will be needed to create, to run the RV park? Maintenance, snowblowing, electric plumbing, upkeep, et cetera, which no one would deny will happen. The cost of putting in an RV park pales in light of upkeep and increased costs thereof. We can't see the future, but we can look at history to advise us of what will most likely happen. If one is old enough, it is obvious that change occurs with each generation, and law enforcement only becomes more important with time. It always comes down to choices, but since time began, governmental enforcement of laws to protect citizens has always been the mandate. Our pleasures, while making life more interesting and fun, cannot overcome the need for law enforcement, and it will be forced to expand as more and more folks from the liberal states invade the conservative ones. Our hopes, our dreams, and prayers are always that things will get better, and that keeps us from going, what keeps us going from day to day. But a brief survey of history reveals that is seldom the case. I am not here to oppose the fairgrounds and the associated benefits of such. I have been involved or attended them for over 70 years. If I had to choose which is more important, the nod has to go to protecting me, my family, my friends, and human life. Like it or not, law enforcement is a mandate. Having been a part of that community for more than 45 years, as much as we would like to dismiss it, our experience tells us we can't. Bonner County is expanding, and by necessity, law enforcement will be forced to accommodate that expansion, one way or another. Thank you, commissioners, for your time, your effort, and your consideration on these important matters.
Thank you. Cynthia? There's Cynthia, there we go.
Yes, good morning, folks. My name's Cynthia Busey. I'm retired from Port of Seattle Authority, 20 years. I have a big background in law enforcement and security. And uh, this is my first rodeo up here, just like this gentleman. And I just found out about this last night, correspondence. So, the notes I was able to make is, uh, first of all, I request that all of you very, very carefully think about and look at encroaching on the property allocated for the sheriff's office and, and really judicial expansion in our county, which is extremely needed. Uh, and my question is, I guess, why two acres would benefit our county? Or expansion removed from the sheriff's office? Um, I believe that this should not be done because of the encroachment on all the people coming into the county, the drugs, the crimes, and fentanyl hasn't even hit up here yet. It will. Uh, and I'm curious why the RV park expansion's necessary for our county? What, what will it benefit? Uh, it's a vacation, uh, offering versus law enforcement that we use every day. Another thing about vacation, here we're going into a recession, I believe. Uh, gasoline, you know, 10 bucks a gallon, who knows? You know, what's going to happen now? And to remove that acreage, and I, I don't know, is it going to be bought, or what's the monetary circumstances for getting this property? And how will it benefit the taxpayers in Bonner County? Uh, the options for two acres being take for a RV park, which I, I still don't understand why the RV park would even be a big consideration to benefit our county, but taking two acres away from an established allocation to the police and judicial system does not seem to make any sense to me. And uh, so with that, I thank you very much for entertaining my comments and appreciate seeing y'all, folks.
Thanks. Daryl, you're up.
Good morning, commissioners. Sheriff Daryl Wheeler, for the record. Uh, the fair is vital to our agricultural way of life in Bonner County. The land that we have had at the justice complex is essential for public safety in Bonner County. On May 26, 2014, Commissioners Kerry Kelly, Mike Nielsen, and Glenn Bailey passed a memorandum of understanding which made a two acre parcel of property exclusively available to the fairgrounds for a temporary parking lot. This space, this same space of property will eventually be used as a parking lot for the justice complex. When and if it's expanded to include a new courthouse, offices for the prosecutor and public defender, a new 911 dispatch center, expansion of the jail, record storage expansion, and general storage facilities for the sheriff's vehicle and equipment. At the Fairgrounds Workshop last Friday, the engineer who drew up the RV park plans advised that a minimum of two acres was needed for a 200 space parking lot. During that same meeting, Commissioner Conley and Bradshaw made recommendations to move the 34 camp spaces within the fairgrounds property and not tie up the two acres currently located on the justice complex property. Commissioner Conley's suggestion was to move that proposed RV campsite just off that two acre parcel and continue to utilize that piece of overflow parking. I encourage you commissioners to follow Commissioner Conley's suggestion to preserve those two acres for future expansion of the Justice Center complex. This is just wise planning in his best compromise. Eventually, the fairgrounds will have to move locations to expand, and by tying up this two acre parcel with RV campsites, we will be tying the hands of future boards when they plan to expand the justice complex center. Thank you.
Brian, Brian Suez, okay, sorry.
Oh, that's fine. Sometimes I have trouble with that also. My name is Brian Silvius, I'm a resident of Bonner County. Um, I've been up here for about eight years now, and I've seen quite a change in the population growth, just in the short time I've been here. Uh, I moved up here for several reasons, one of them to get out of California and their liberal politics and the um, disintegration of the town that I lived in, based on that. Uh, up here, I found that we were pretty protected from the sheriff's department, uh, the services they provide. Um, also enjoy going to the fair. Uh, they put on a wonderful fair, a lot of programs, enjoy the rodeo. Uh, that's a vital need in the community, I believe. But I also think that with the influx of so many people coming up here to Bonner County, that we need to secure the property for expansion of law enforcement and criminal justice. Just for the simple fact that the more people that come into the area, in different areas of the country, they bring their problems with them, and we're going to see an increase in calls for service, delays in response time, uh, more traffic accidents, and uh, I think that we just need to hold on to the property that we have for the future. And I thank the members here today for listening and your service to our community. Thank you.
Dave Bowman.
Hey Bowman, for the record, uh, I'll echo some of what's already been said here. I would ask, what is the benefit to the taxpayers of, of, of putting these RV spaces in, in what is now the justice complex or what will be? I don't see the wisdom either of putting, I think this came up during the ice rink discussions, of who in the world would put an RV complex right next to an evidence yard? There's gotta be better choices. And uh, so if, if the rationale for expanding, for putting these RV spaces in there is that we are experiencing growth, well, that growth is going to bring increased need for law enforcement. We've already seen increased calls for services every year that goes by, every month that goes by, exacerbated during the summer months. So, there's gotta be a better place to put this. Uh, maybe think about the McGee Sports Complex, that came into play before, it might be a handy spot to put this thing. That's all I have.
You have a public comment? Do you have anybody on the line? Okay. Okay, we'll go ahead and move forward. Consent agenda.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second that. Okay, we have a motion a second, any question or comment? None, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Uh, going along to clerk, Mike.
Morning, commissioners, morning, everybody. Before you, I have fiscal year '22 claims batch 21 for your approval in the amount of $1,387,011.55 and demand batch 21 in the amount of $605,563.40 totaling $1,199,1990. Good grief, $1,999.
Thanks. Yes, for your approval. Thank you, Dave.
Sound like Jeff Conley.
Oh, yeah.
Let's say. I move to approve payment of FY '22 claims and demands in batch number 21 totaling $1,992,574.95.
And I'll second that motion.
Yeah, we have a motion a second, any question or comment, Doug?
It's a big number.
Lots of.
I left it in the office, I will, I'll bring it to you afterwards. Uh, healthcare, uh, help, uh, that's the biggest part of that, uh, health, uh, healthcare and, yeah, benefits.
But it's also that time of year for road and bridge, right? A lot of my projects. Okay. I don't know if that's what you're at. I love asking questions without asking. Well, we already know, we've kind of been down this road before. Is this why I don't pop?
Any other question or comment? Go ahead, Kendra.
I just need an, Kendra Martin, for the record, I just need education. What's the difference between demands and claims?
So, claims are the ones that normally work through on a regular, they put the, they put the, uh, the bills in, it goes through the approval process of the commissioners, it comes to a meeting like this, they get approved, then they cut the check. Demands are when time is of the essence and they need it right away, and they can't wait, because it can take two and a half weeks sometimes to hit the right trip for that. Um, and so, uh, if it's time is of the essence, and it being properly payable by auditing, and we know what our property payable, we go ahead and cut the check, and then they still have to approve them, but they do it after the fact.
Okay, but that's all in the budget.
On the budget, and it's all per step.
Cool, thank you.
Hey, any other question or comment? See none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Next, I have claims batch number 21, uh, for EMS in the amount of $26,282.72 and demand batch 21, EMS in the amount of $21,214.56, totaling $47,497.28.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve payment of FY '22 EMS claims and demands in batch number 21 totaling $47,497.28.
Second that. Here we have motion, second questions, Doug?
Um, same, same question. I would, I would point out that EMS normally doesn't have much in the way of, of demands, um, so.
I, I can get that free after.
Don't have any recollection of.
They, they would, you have the demand list in front of you.
Oh, yeah. That pattern under the record. $13,000. That's. Yeah. Did make my point?
Yep, station, station one lease is $6,400.
What, what was that again?
Station one lease, that property downtown.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and, and that's a demand, that's not a planned payment?
Sometimes they don't make it to us, and they could make it to us, but the people that need the money still need it by that time, and so it's. We frown on demands when we can, uh, but it is a possible, a viable way to do it if somebody's doing it. We pay all credit cards by demand because they have to go out immediately.
I understand, but this seems to me like it ought to be a plan.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah. Any other question or comment? See none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes, thanks, Mike.
Thanks. On the topic of spending money, we do have budgetarians going, if anybody wants to know how we spend our tax dollars or don't spend our tax dollars, uh, look on the commissioner's website under special meetings. Thank you.
We've had a lot more attendance than I, I think it's good that a lot more people have been coming to our budget meeting.
Assistance, Kevin, there you are. You were back there somewhere.
Here in Rothenberger County Assistance. Commissioners, the resolution before you is an amendment to Resolution 2050, Non-Medical Indigent Assistance Program. This will add rental and utility assistance to the column of not available by the county, so it removes the application process for rental and utilities. We have not had an approval for rental or utility since 2016. There are various ministerial and civic organizations that have grant money available. If they go through my office, it is a loan, so we prefer they go through grant money first because the person's in need for rent issue. I don't have to worry about having to repay them either.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-56, mending for our Resolution 2050, Non-Medical Indigent Assistance.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, we have a motion a second, any question or comment, Doug?
Um, could you explain to me what non-medical indigent assistance is?
So, Title 31, Chapter 34 is the Non-Medical Assistance Program in the state of Idaho. That is for cremation, burial, rental, utilities, and it uses it up to the county to determine what they want to pay as far as a non-medical issue. Um, so we have procedures and policies in place that say what we will pay, what we will not pay. And in this case, since rental and utility comes under that chapter of, of Chapter 34, we're going to remove it since we haven't actually had an application since 2016 for that.
So, so the, the rental and, and utilities hasn't been used for a while?
Has not been used since 2016. We're limited to a one month period and a 12 month.
Thank you. Plus, it's got to be repaid, I don't know if you heard that part, so we encourage them to look for grants, because it just kicks a can down the road.
Hey, any other question or comment? See none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, Kevin, Solid Waste, Bob.
Morning, Commissioner, by fire director, Solid Waste, for the record. Solid Waste is requesting a budget revision. We are requesting to move $250,000 from the USDA construction loan uh, to line item 023-9480 to cover costs for engineering fees for the capital improvement project.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the county, that the county approved Resolution 2022-57, solid waste budget revision, and authorized the clerk to open the budget and increase line on 023-9480 in the amount of $250,000 from the USDA construction loan.
Second that. Yeah, we have a motion a second, any question or comment? Who wants to go first?
Kendra Martin, for the record, so the capital improvement project, can you tell me what that is?
That's our capital improvements project for solid waste sites, Colburn, Vickikey, Idaho Hill, and the Duvert site.
Okay, and then you said it's the USDA is loaning the money?
Right.
Okay, now, I know that USDA is tied up with ARPA funding and stuff like that. Are we dealing with ARPA funding with this USDA money at all? Nope.
This was before ARPA funding even became.
Great, I know that, I just, the USDA is tied up in it right now, so I just wanted to clarify that. So, that's fine, thank you.
It was a voter, voter approved initiative.
Did you have a question?
I learned what.
Maureen, go ahead.
Maureen Patterson, for the record, I just wanted to know, what is it you're going to be doing?
We're going to do some remodeling at, at all the sites, we're going to make them bigger, improve efficiency and environmental issues going on right now. So, the Colburn site's like 25, almost 30 years old, so we've had no improvements, so we're going to make improvements to bring that to current standards.
Okay, any other question?
So, you're going to bring it up to standards, so have, since it was approved, have the standards changed? And therefore, you're obligated to make those improvements?
Um, we're obligated in some areas, yes. Other areas, we, we receive so much more trash with, with the growth, that we're going to make it more efficient to move the trash into long haul trucks to take it away.
Okay.
In 1996, they built a temporary solution, a small tipping floor over.
Mm-hmm.
All the trash from the entire county comes through there.
Mm-hmm.
Supposed to, that last five years, it was maxed out in four years. We're handling twice the trash we had before.
Yeah.
Plus, what we're doing is really inefficient, because we're literally hauling trash, we're handling it two or three times. So, what we're going to do is we're going to increase the tipping floor out here, do away with the dumpsters, you build it back in and just dump. And then some of the money we're saving is going to go to create a secondary tipping floor, so we're not hauling trash around.
Okay.
Reduce the overall operating costs.
Okay, so my, my concern is that we're having, uh, you know, finances are getting kind of crazy right now with the, in the nation. And I'm just wondering, is, is this $250,000 a mandatory thing that we need to do right now, or can it?
Voter group bond.
Okay.
Yeah, this has been in the works for years, we had a bond election.
Is it three years now, probably two and a half? Well, I don't, it's been going on for a long time.
Okay, so this is out, previously allocated funds that are now being implemented, is that what I'm hearing?
Correct.
Okay.
USDA money was received um, after the FY '22 budget was approved, that's why it's not in our budget.
That's why we need to bring it in.
Okay, got it.
Much lower interest than any place else.
Yeah. Okay, any other question or comment? See none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes, thank you, Bob. Darcy Fair.
I'd be fair.
Morning, commissioners, uh, Darcy Smith, for the record. Um, before you guys, you have the Idaho Department of Parks and Recreation RV Grant Agreement in the amount of $473,315. Back in January, the board, as you, most of you recall, approved the fairgrounds to apply for the 2023 Idaho Parks and Recreation RV Fund for the Fairgrounds RV Campground Expansion Project. That's a mouthful, um, in the amount of $473,315. Um, attached is the agreement and the application received back from IDPR approving this application. The, the fairgrounds are required to have a 5% match, which should be $25,000, which comes out of the fairgrounds funds, it does not come out of the county budget. And that's pretty much it in a nutshell. I mean, we, we did have a workshop on Friday, we've had workshops previous. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions or concerns once you open it for discussion.
Okay.
You, Steve?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the IDPR RV Grant Agreement, project number RV23-1-09-1 for the Bonner County Fairgrounds RV Campground Expansion Project, Phase One, in the amount of $473,315.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, we have a motion a second, I'm going to open up a question, comment, but I want to answer some of the questions that were brought up during during the, uh, public comment by the sheriff and his, what appears to be his posse. So, let me explain, uh, let me explain some of the issues here. We are always looking for ways to increase revenue for the county, to reduce taxpayer liability, which means you don't have to pay as much taxes. Right now, the fairgrounds takes about, what is it, $275,000 a year for payroll?
For payroll, and then we do receive a one-time check from the county for $20,000 for operating expenses.
So, our, our, this board's goal has always been to make the fairgrounds self-sufficient to relieve some of that burden for the taxpayer. Um, premium, there's a premium on RV spaces in Bonner County, there's not enough of them for the people that want to come here. We have the current RV lot that's quite a bit smaller, um, and it's busy all summer, well over 100 days. Even during the winter, there's what, six spaces that are used?
We have six spaces that are full electric and.
So, the goal is to try to figure out a way to make the fairgrounds self-sufficient with this. When I ran calculations during the workshop on Friday, if we bring those, those spots up to market, which we shouldn't be competing against private sectors, we're going to bring them up to market, and adding the additional spots, they're going to not only pay the, pay off the 275 grand that they take from the general fund every year, which will offer some relief, but they'll also clear anywhere between 100 and 150,000, which, if you know the fairgrounds, the front parking lot has needed to be paid for decades. There's building maintenance needs to be done, the county owns the building, so technically, we would have to pay for the maintenance if they can't. So, you're, you're looking at an overall reversal of tax liability for all the taxpayers, which is fairly considerable. Now, let's talk about the land. Claire, can you bring up, is it too much of a problem to bring up the map?
Yes.
Okay. So, if you look at all the land out there, what we're talking about is a two acre sliver um, along the edge of where all the parking happens for all the events. Um, we had the area of the ice rink that is, obviously, the ice rink's not going anymore, so there's four acres there. There's an, so that's an area that's continued to be open. There's also a area between the jail and the juvenile detention, which will nicely fit a justice facility if the voters decide they want to pass a 100 to $150 million. which will nicely fit a justice facility if the voters decide they want to pass a hundred to a hundred and fifty million dollar um levy or bond to build that in the future. I don't see it happening soon. And with the jail itself, we went through an exhaustive study. Um, I think we paid what, fifty grand to have that architect come in? And looked at do an expansion on the jail. And not only could we increase the capacity dramatically, but even the, with the increase, it didn't go beyond the perimeter road, if you're familiar with the jail that goes around it. So there's still ample room left. Plus, that jail can also go to a second story. It's designed to go two stories. So as far as space or future space goes, that's not an issue. To respond to why we need it, um, that's pretty obvious. You're talking about additional revenue. That means all the taxpayers of Bonner County pay less, which is our goal. In these uncertain financial times, I mean, if you would, if you've been sitting through our budget workshops, um, you would hear that, you know, we're in trouble. Inflation's hurting the county. Just the fuel increase itself is killing us. I mean, we're seeing numbers that we've never seen on fuel before, and we may see them even more. So we're looking for every opportunity to find a revenue source to offset expense, so that the taxpayers aren't on the hook for either both increased taxes and decreased services. Because that's what we're up to. We can only go up three percent a year. Inflation's running at nine point one. Obviously, we can't cover that. There's no way to cover it. So that means the next step is we start decreasing services. And while it sounds um maybe mildly romantic um from a conservative point of view, um, what it means is fewer days plowing in the snow, you may be on your own a bit. Um, even with respect to the sheriff, if the roads aren't plowed, the sheriff can't go out and make arrests or do traffic control, neither can EMS. So when you start looking at the overall dynamics of this and looking at the long-range picture, um, this makes a heck of a lot more sense than leaving that ground fallow and having it not make any revenue. Like I said, when I look at, and I oversee the fair board, so I know what's going on with all the buildings. We need a new roof on the main exhibit building. There's a number of things, but the parking lot alone, um, they could pave that parking lot within a year or two with just the revenues. So, and we did look at, we looked at uh the architect and uh, or the engineer, and Darcy looked at every possibility within the fairgrounds for possibly moving that, and there just is no way to do it. Anyway, there's no other place on that fairgrounds property. Now, should the fairgrounds need to be moved again? Or moved in twenty or thirty, forty years? We can demo that, uh, we can demo that site. The improvements are really just parking spots and one building. That can be demoed. We'd have to pay it back to half a million, but if you're talking about building a hundred and fifty million dollar um building in today's dollars, which you knows what it'll be in five, ten, or twenty years, um, that half a million bucks is chump change. So it's an on-issue. Harold, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I would. Uh, really uh contradict what you just said. Uh, the jail originally was engineered and designed to be two stories. Uh, they saved money and put a foundation in there with, that would not support a two-story building, which is false. Uh, we did the assessment uh on that facility, and we quit the assessment because halfway through, we realized that the cost was not going to meet the needs of our facility, and we stopped going forward with that because the building was too old. We still did not, excuse me, Mr. Commissioner. Commissioner, please, please let me speak. The assessment.
But you're putting out fake information.
No, I have copies.
I have the completed.
I have copies of that. If we did not support another uh um exercise room, it did not take care of all of the needs that we had, and we stopped that um assessment and going forward, spending any more money because they realized we were just throwing the money down. I have meeting minutes that, that are available for people to listen to, uh, the recordings where we made that decision. Um, there has been no engineering at all for any potential um justice facility, and for us to say just because there's a chunk of land that it's going to meet our needs, there's been no drawings, there's been no um study at all. And I know that the parking area for the public defender and the prosecutor's office has a total of maybe twenty spots, so there was no parking available there. There's not enough parking at the courthouse for us to go forward and just make a statement that our, our land will do that without any proof or any engineering already um is just total fabrication. So I can I have facts and I have all those records. If anyone wants those, they can look at them, and we have recordings of that. Um, shame on you for doing that and for saying that because it's not true. I really encourage uh Commissioner Connolly and, and Bradshaw to really look forward and looking, do we want to tie up that? Commissioner Connolly uh had a great idea when we had the workshop. Let's move that off of that, and let's tie it up because we never heard from the community on how important that is, and that decision was made. And I just really think that for, for a wise decision, looking forward, we should just move that off of that two-acre property and move it. We've got, we will have RVs parking, people barbecuing on the other side of our evidence fence where we are collecting evidence with vehicles that uh that were part of homicides uh with very violent crimes, and we've got people just on the other side of that fence, barbecuing, having their kids play. I really think that this is short-sighted to just to go ahead and move on that, and I really encourage uh Mr. Connolly and Mr. Bradshaw to step up and say let's pause and let's see if that's really best for us, rather than just moving forward, because it's not going to hurt anything to pause. So thank you.
We currently have, when every time we have a function there, we have RVs parked there, people barbecuing there already. We have a playground right around the corner. There's housing projects all through the back. There's a new housing project on the side. There's a new housing project going across the street. Fortunately, we keep everything locked up, at least I hope, including the prisoners. Go ahead.
Doug Patterson, for the record. Um, you know, the, the idea of putting this in and helping the, the fairground to um self-sustain, I think, is a great one. I think you have the wrong location. I think there's security issues relative to the juvenile center and the sheriff's department that, that are, have potential there that, that are in that location you can't avoid, and um that's what I got to say. Thanks.
Play with the ground around there, Doug?
Yeah, yes, and but it's sure, when you're, when you have a proposal like this, it sure be.
Goes on, we have shows, we have draft tour shows, we have the Christmas fair. I mean, there's a variety of things that happen on those grounds all the time, and we've not had an issue.
I'm, I'm painfully aware of most of those um grandchildren and all that, but but there's still risks associated with that in this location. And to have a proposal for something like this and not have maps available either up there or down there, I think is also wrong.
Get maps available.
If, if I may.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, to answer one of the questions earlier about maintenance in regards to this campground, um, all of the current maintenance for the existing campground are done at the dime of the fairgrounds. We have maintenance uh crews that handle that. It will not be anything that's going to encumber the board or the county funding in any way. Um, we do have maps. We, this has not been something that's been fly-by-night. This has been a project that's been ongoing since it started in two thousand and nineteen with the first phase of this campground expansion. The first phase was for um pavement, which was approved and is currently in there. Everyone's enjoying. Um, as far as these additional phases, um, you know, we could certainly talk about hypothetical situations all day long as far as relocating the facility for the fairgrounds. That could take twenty years. We will all be gone by then. Um, the hypothetical situation of um not hypothetical, but the at some point, if the voters do vote to expand the sheriff's complex, when and will that happen? We're just going to hold that land so that no one can use it. We have a nomadic lifestyle currently existing, not just in Bonner County, nationwide. People can't afford housing. We deal with that on the front because people are trying to find locations to come and camp. They try, we have a very desirable location. Uh, we are full majority of the year. Um, there are a lot of events that are right next to the evidence yard. Currently, right next to the evidence yard, there are three old ambulances sitting there. That's been there for quite a long time. No one's messed with them. No one's bothering them. We just had a horse show, all of our horse trailers and horse um trucks and whatnot, supplies were all parked right there. No issues. We have u- utilized that property before the sheriff's office was there. We have maps showing that. There haven't been any security issues. Could there be potentially? Heck, yeah. There could always be potential. All we can do is, you know, try our best to make sure that we mitigate and make it as safe as possible.
Yeah, and even if the, even with the, and one of the questions with the economic downturn and what happens the economic downturn, what we saw when housing got scarce here was that we had people living full-time at the, at the fairgrounds campground. You see.
Yes.
You can't afford to find, you can't find housing, you can't afford it. If you can't find it, the next best thing is you get an RV and you live in the RV. Um, and so we, and, and even with fuel going up when they're parked at the campsite, they're not burning any fuel. Go ahead, Kendra.
Kendra Martin, for the record, um, I am coming to this as somebody that was a camp host for a year and a half, and I watched campgrounds fill up. I, and it was last two years. I currently live in a fifth wheel, so I'm very familiar with this lifestyle. Um, when I was being a camp host at Blue Lake RV up in Boundary County, uh, there was many occasions where we would have people come in that um were questionable, um, were concerning. Um, and we had to take methods to take care of that. So, when you guys are talking about nomadic lifestyle, uh, you're talking about living full-time on uh in a county RV park, that's concerning to me. Um, it's are you going to have a police force there? Are you going to authorize the person that runs that RV park to police that? Because as things get more tenuous in the nation and in our area, because everybody's fleeing from where they're at, are we going to have a police force of some kind that's monitoring that? My concern is the short-sightedness of, we're talking, we're talking about the sheriffs and the justice part. We're not talking about a supermarket. We're not talking about some, you know, non-law enforcement entity. This is our law enforcement branch that we're talking about. We should be advocating for them instead of trying to short-change them every turn of the dial. And that's one of the things I most.
We should be short-changing. Their budget is doubled since twenty fourteen.
I'm not tying that, I'm not talking about budget. I'm talking about the antagon.
Go to the ground. First of all, two things. One, there's already a campground out there that's been advantaged for years.
Okay, can you, can you?
That down.
Can, I'm, I'm trying to say something. I didn't ask a question.
And I will give you a chance to speak again.
Yeah, this is always the case.
Secondly, there's still a ton of room out there. A ton of, there's four, eight, ten acres out there that still exist. Eight acres out there that still exist.
Mm-hmm. Is that, is that fair property?
There's a fairground, no?
Yeah, four acres where the, where the fair, where the, where the uh.
Ice rink used to be.
And then that space in between the, is, is about four acres as well.
No, it's less than two.
My concern is, we should be protecting our law enforcement compound with the evidence that's in that compound as well. I understand we're the weird situation that we have a fairgrounds right next to a, a justice compound. That's kind of odd. But to, to push the fairgrounds further into the Justice Department or the Justice Compound, eh, that, that doesn't seem wise to me at all. And I, and I'm sure that if the, the public really got involved, you'd probably hear more people say that. It just seems wiser that we should be strengthening our law enforcement, not weakening them by hindering them. I understand, I actually have a stack of paperwork about this big, about this whole process. I didn't know, we, I actually didn't know we were going to be talking about that today, but I have it at home. And what's interesting is the dialogue that went on about the skating rink, the paving, and then the campground came in. It wasn't something from the very beginning. I don't, I, if it is, I don't have it in my paper, my public records. Uh, that's, but I have the paperwork I've read through. My point is this. Um, this doesn't seem wise to me at all, at all. There, there's no wisdom here whatsoever. We should be protecting, like the sheriff said, the evidence that is in that impound yard. If we have people coming that are going to be there full-time, that's very concerning for me. And then the other thing, I know I brought this up previously, the competition with the private sector. I don't think it's the government's job to be competing with the private sector. If you have an event and you have trailers, where are the horse trailers going to go? Where are the trucks going to go now? If we have an RV park and we have people there, where are we going to put the horse trailers? Where are we going to put the trucks now?
That's why we're not putting it here. Or one of the suggestions was to move it north, more on towards Fairgrounds property, because that's where the horse trailers.
No, you just said that the horse trailer pa- uh, we're parking there is where you want to put this RV park, right?
They park, they, there's a whole area they park.
Did you not just say that the, the horse trailers were parking in the location you want to put the RV park in?
Parking here.
Okay.
They do, both places.
Okay.
Park. I'm answering your question.
I know.
They park in that area that we would like to have the campground.
Mm-hmm.
They also exceed that area and park into what we like to call the south lawn.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and this, I believe you're referring to in the paperwork for the fair workshop that was held in January. And it, it's not that the RV campground was just snuck in there at the bottom of.
No, no, I'm not talking about that.
Serena was brought in after that, uh, in that particular workshop. We're not trying to take things away from the sheriff. We are good neighbors to them. We allow them to come over and train with their dogs all the time. They have.
That's okay. I'm not talking about, Darcy, I'm not talking about your relationship with the sheriff's department. I'm talking about this board, um, specifically, Dan. I'm, I'm, that's the, that, the, ever since I've been here, I've seen the antagonism going on between Dan and the sheriff, and I, and I find it very unprofessional, and I do think it flaws the decision-making process, which I'm sad about because it shouldn't.
So then how did its budget get doubled from twenty fourteen to now?
I'm talking about the budget, Dan.
The, the budget.
I'm talking about, first of all, the ice rink, and now, and then the RV park, and both of them unfolding.
So we're getting a little bit on a copy here.
My point is this, I don't think it's wise to put an RV park. I have experience living in an RV park. I understand being the manager of an RV park. I understand the, the, how they deal with in an RV park, especially for those that, that live there full-time, which you both have mentioned.
We do not.
And I don't think that's wise.
Live there full-time.
You just said you had six.
If I may, we do not allow people to live there full-time. We have winter camping, which is from October fifteenth to April fourteenth. And they have an agreement, they have to be out. It is winter camping. Majority of those people work at Schweitzer. We have an agreement with them that we allow their seasonal employees to have a, a secure spot that, and reasonable fees that they can live at the fairgrounds. That is not permanent. For the rest of the time during April fifteenth to October fourteenth, it is a two-week max stay, and we are strict on that.
And why did you say living full-time? That was your, that was your words, living full-time.
I did not. There are people that live full-time nomadic lifestyles.
Hey, Kendra, I'm going to cut it off. We've gone, you've gone a long time. Anyone else who wishes to speak, break that up, comment?
Maureen Patterson, for the record. So if the concern is this two hundred and seventy thousand dollars that um uh payroll, okay? Um, this is a desirable location, and we are having an increase of population of people moving here. Why don't you look in terms of, it, has there been more rental of the buildings? I know that the buildings, you know, renting them brings in revenue, right? And also um an increase of revenue of the fair itself. That, that, that would be bringing in more revenue, right? Just because we have more people moving here.
We've addressed this multiple times. In fact, our Holly Barn, for those that are familiar with the fairgrounds, we just insulated the entire building to make it usable year-round. In past, it's only been used for storage. We only currently have, aside from the Holly Barn, one building that could be utilized year-round because of heat. Obviously, we know our temperatures. The majority of those buildings are, are used for storage for our vehicles, our pens, our panels throughout those winter months. Now that the Holly Barn has been renovated partially, there's still no restrooms in it. That can be utilized year-round, which means we will get more revenue for that building.
It's the main exhibit building you choose just about every day of the week, all through the winter.
Through the winter, every, it's, it's, we utilize it. We actually, um, since I came on board, we start stacking sports in there and stacking, meaning I have more than one event in the building per day just sectioned by hours. So we're trying our best to utilize the facilities.
So that has increased your revenue?
It has, but that's that's nowhere near. One building is not unfortunately going to make that revenue up for our salaries.
Yeah, a lot of thoughts really gone, gone into this. Trying to come up with a plan moving forward and make you guys self-sufficient. And this is the last piece of that, that, that thought process and that plan.
Um, if I, if I may, Commissioner, in, in in response to, I believe it was Kendra who said, do we have our own police force? No, we don't. We sit in this, uh, the limits of Sandpoint, and so if there is an issue, we usually call dispatch and city of Sandpoint will come out if we have an issue.
So, I would like to say a few things, since this has been a hot topic, and my name's been brought up several times. Just to clarify, all I was doing was trying to throw different ideas out there. Have we thought about this? Because um, as we all know, you know, Dan sits on the over the fair, and um he is in you know, contact with these folks all the time. We see it just in workshops and stuff like that because that's the way this works. We're not allowed to more than one of us be involved in this at any one time. So we, we in workshops, ask questions, make suggestions. Have, have we looked at this? Have we looked at moving it north? And I'm, I still think that it's a viable possibility. Um, one thing that that I brought up at that workshop too was we need to make sure in contact, which I think Darcy did, I don't. We need to make sure in contact, which I think Darcy did. I don't know if she had any luck. Um, the parks and rec grant folks and just say, okay, so if something. Down the road, say ten years, because I don't see anything in the near future in the next five or six years. Um, and we wanna expand and the sheriff says, you know, or the sheriff, it's time. Mr. Wheeler, whichever it may be, um, says, hey, we need this area. Then, okay, we'll tear up half of it or the part that expands or all of it, whatever it is. So that we can use it for its highest and best use, but just right now it's sitting there doing nothing is. You know, so it seems like it, it's a viable um, use of it and. Um, I understand that a lot of people are saying, hey, why don't you look over here to get more money? But this is a very. Um, I mean, with grant funding to build it and to have that net return. Um, I don't know that we know exactly what that net return would be. But any of that stuff, I mean, we're looking for that in our airports. We're looking for that in the fairgrounds. We're looking for that. Ever since I've got here, almost six years ago, that's what our goal has been, is to make everything possibly. That can be self-sufficient. And, and I think that that's our job is not to subsidize these. Different things with taxpayer money. Um, so as for me, I'll support it. As long as we have word from, um.
I, I do have a voicemail from her, but it came in during. Well, I contacted, um, the. The Idaho Department of Recs has different grant programs. I contacted specifically the one for the RV grant. Tiffany, and I reached out to her questioning in the future if there were to be a relocation of the fairgrounds. What would those ramifications be if we were to demolish those um, campgrounds? Would we have to repay that? Kinda go from there. Um, that's most likely an answer from her, but another thing, oh, sorry.
Well, it's either that or I'm gonna have to try to push this thing out.
Well, if I, if I may, the other thing is, um, with, and this is something that, that we've brought up during and which may be rhetorical to you guys. But for those that weren't at any of the workshops, these grant funds once approved by you guys. That location is not set in stone. I am, and the fair board are more than willing to work to see if we can wiggle that somewhere else. If we can make it viable somewhere else, yes, the engineering costs will come up, but we have that contingent in this, the, this amount when we applied. So. If approved, it doesn't mean one hundred percent. It's gonna go right there on that two acres. They can move a little forward. It could potentially use that location that, that you guys had mentioned in the workshop on Friday where instead of this way, it's this way. And. Just have that be known that that could be a change. Um, and it, we're not the only people that that has happened to. This is something that Idaho Parks and Recs works with, with other locations. Stuff happens. They understand that. They're not gonna rip the funding away. We just have to be transparent and communicative with them.
I'd like to touch on a couple of things that came up. Uh, one was security and stuff like that. I wanna reassure everybody that my sheriff is not gonna put evidence that used in a homicide. In an open vacant lot. I would assume and almost guarantee without reservation that that would be in an, in an enclosed lot. Though it's not like it's sitting there where somebody can just walk up and tamper with it. Uh, that would be extremely irresponsible. Uh, as far as who's camping in the campground. Uh. AD character type people usually are kinda reluctant to camping out right next to the fence at the sheriff's apartment. Because if they have issues at some time, they'll be camping on the other side of that fence. So. I don't, I don't think it's a big security issue. Uh, I don't think it's a problem. Our sheriff's not gonna throw evidence out there in an open lot. It's just not gonna happen.
I'll go ahead and call for the vote then. All those in favor, say aye.
Sorry to interrupt, but I just wanted to make one more comment. There's been a lot of talk today. Nice Brian Silves again. Been a lot of talk today about security. Um, the fence line, uh, evidence, um, locations, where we can put this, where we can generate some money for the fair. Um, but the bottom line is. Who's gonna be paying for the fair? Who's gonna be paying for future use of that uh, property? If we do expand the criminal justice system, whatever it takes. Uh, we don't have a crystal ball. We can't look into the future. We don't know. But I know, speaking for myself, I would rather pay a few extra cents in my taxes. To subsidize the fair versus taking away from what could potentially be used or public safety. And I think if we did a poll, poll on the community up here, I think citizens up here would want public safety. And they would be willing to pay a little more in their taxes, which taxes have been going up every year. I'm willing to pay a little bit more for public safety. And I think we did a poll. You'd find that out as the general rule. Thank you.
Yeah, and this isn't an either or thing. This, I said plenty of room for public safety. So now I'll go and call for the vote. You wanna, you have some?
Well, I don't know. I mean. I thought we were, I'm basing my decision on what I know.
Wanna listen to the message? All we're doing, all we're doing is choosing to accept, all we're doing is choosing to accept the grant. We can still fiddle with the location if we need to.
Generally speaking, when we approve it, it's gonna go this way. It was said. I, 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 I have never seen anything. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, if I, if I may, um, Commissioner Conley, if you can alter that motion and approve the funding. Um, contingent on a future decision on a location.
Agreement on location.
Well, I think.
Something that will work.
Whether or not we have to. We can actually demo it ten years down the road.
Well, it's all of those things, so that that would, that would enter into it. So if we can't demo it, then I'm not gonna be for it. That's pretty much bottom line is if.
And I don't, I don't think the demo's the issue. I think it's just, I think it's really, it's like any other grant. If we demo it, we'd have to pay it back.
Well, we think that, but there's.
They can't force us to keep it, but that way. Can they?
Well.
Our property.
Yeah, it's our property.
But the point of the matter is, is why wouldn't we ask the question and have?
Yeah, why don't you listen to the message, Darcy?
I.
We recommend.
What Darcy said works.
Listening to a voicemail in a public meeting, not having any idea what he's gonna say. And then basing a decision on that, receiving the information at the very, at, at that moment. Is that, that is probably not a practical, not a great, good way to make a decision.
When do we alter a condition?
So, that's, if that's appropriate, the problem is we're. Whether or not, we're making some assumptions here. About altering of this motion and whether, what that may or may not bind us to in the future. I've had absolutely no opportunity to. I mean, I don't know amending the motion to accept the money, but not to approve the location appropriate. Can't give you that opinion now. Because that's come just, posed for the first time. So I just have reservations about making that kind of.
Let's pick it a week. We can probably answer all of the questions.
That would be, I think that would be the appropriate, definitely.
Then I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, to, uh, table this to a date certain of next Tuesday.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to table this and reschedule it for next Tuesday.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, so it's tabled. Thank you, Darcy.
Thank you, guys.
See you next week. Um, G S Mike.
Uh, Mike Bowling, Jester Director. Um, so before you this morning is a approval to enter into a contract with Canon Solutions of America. For a lease on a Canon printer. Um, currently lease one, our lease is coming up and it's just, uh, we're getting a new, a new machine. Uh, it's actually slightly cheaper by a few dollars a month.
Where are you going with a cheaper copier?
Mr. Chairman, based on the information, I move that the county approved the contract with Canon Solutions of America.
Oh, check it that. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any question or comment? Seriously?
Yeah. What can I say? Um, I come into these meetings on a regular basis and we have these contracts again and again and again and again. With every department, sub-department individually, is there a potential of saving some money by having an overall contract? Thank you.
So when one, well, they don't last forever. Um, so we have that one underlying agreement that has provisions that apply across all departments. And then as new departments, so either these expires or their needs change. That's why we have these. But we do have an underlying, thanks for.
Any other question or comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those passes. Thank you, Michael. Prosecutor, Bill.
Do I have on the first?
Uh, you have the vast. You only have one.
Uh, we amended to add. Only one, but it's vast. Vast, but we amended to include. Service agreement for Boundary County Public.
Right.
So I'll do the vast one first. Um, before you is a typically, you've seen these now many times. Uh, these are. Uh, grants which we receive, or not grants, excuse me, donations that we receive for VAS, which is our back Victims Advocate Services team. And people give those so that we can continue that mission. Um, we provide all sorts of services for victims of domestic violence at Lilybrook. And we receive, I think this one's for about forty-five hundred dollars. Um, and their proposal is to open the budget since it's unanticipated revenue and place that into two different line items. Uh, for public awareness and longevity, I believe. I don't have the memo in front of me. Um, this is something that we do all the time for VAST and it's a really. Awesome thing that the public donates money to this service. We're asking for your approval to open the budget and, uh, put that money where it can be best used.
Okay. All right, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move for the board to approve Resolution twenty twenty-two dash five eight. Attached to this memo, opening the budget and distributing donations to VAST as discussed.
I'll second the motion.
Can we have a motion in a second? Any question or comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Oh, sure.
It's only half. I prefer to shoot for the head, but sometimes.
Yeah.
Okay, so the, the next matter before you guys is a service agreement that we have been working on.
Hold on a second.
Okay.
Skip one.
Will you put it as a public defender item? Okay.
Okay, then nevermind.
Then we'll come back. Yep, okay.
Thanks, Barry. Yeah, Doug back in there. So moving along, uh, planning.
Eric Beasley, planner. Um, thank you, Commissioner. Cheers, thank you to the public. Um, I'm here to, uh, present a roadway request for. Uh, family exemption, um, or, or family exemption applicants, Leanne and Dean Schiller. Um. They are looking to buy a ten acre parcel. Um, to convey five acres of that parcel to their son. Um, with the remainder of ano- another five acres. Um. Just a little bit about the existing parcel. Um. Uh. The parcel is in rural designation or rural five designation, zoning designation, I'm sorry. And the. And. Um. Uh, you can access this parcel via a, uh, private, private road. The private road is. Um. Ponderosa Ranch Road, I'm sorry. Um, that is about, that's like west of Lake Shore Drive. And this parcel is in Segal. So a little bit about there, a little bit about the road, roadway request. Um, they're requesting to. Um, they're proposing to add a driveway from parcel two onto parcel one. Um. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, sorry.
You're fine. We usually give all the new guys a hard hour.
Yeah.
I, I think we should, uh, ponderosa thing. I can't let that one go.
We spoke about it this.
No problem, Mr. Chairman. To approve the applicant's request to deviate from the road standard set forth in Bonner County Revised Code Appendix A Title Twelve. Or the file FE zero 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 eight dash two two.
What second that? Yeah, we have a motion in a second. Any question or comment? Go ahead, Doug.
Peterson for the record. Um, so that you've got a ten acre parcel that's going down to two fives. And that's associated with this. What's the zoning for that area?
Rule five, yeah, sorry about that.
Thank you.
No, you said it.
Yeah, you said it.
That, but it was kinda jumbled up, so.
We were hung up on the. Okay, any other question or comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, Jason, okay.
I think Steve.
Jason, you're up.
Morning, Commissioner. Just stop, Director Redbridge. This is the same three graders that we've been dealing with for months. Anybody has any questions about it? There's a lot to go to this to get to the financing part of this. And this is just a selection of the banks. We actually went out for proposals to three banks or four banks, I guess it was. And we only had two that actually replied back with a greater financing option. Of those two, Columbia Bank have the best agreement. Which is what we're looking to go with, if the commissioner's approved. So I will go through and Redden Bridge has received the two proposals. One from Washington Trust Bank for financing the greater lease at four point five seven percent. Of an annual rate with an annual payment of ninety-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars. Columbia Bank proposed financing of the two graders. Of two of the three graders at three point nine nine percent fixed. That one will actually run through the end of August. Those greater, those two graders, we'll be seeing those around. Around August seventeenth, eighteenth, we should be seeing those two graders. The third grader will be coming afterwards in September. Which they proposed a rate of four point five five percent to lock that rate through October twenty-fifth. And it'll have an annual payment of thirty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven, twenty-eight. And with that.
Chairman, I move to approve the Roden Bridge Department soliciting a five-year lease agreement with Columbia Bank. For the lease purchase of three John Deere seven, seven, two GP graders. Financing will be provided at three point nine nine percent fixed rate for two graders for a total of five years. With an annual payment of fifty-nine thousand, three hundred, fifty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents. This will provide for an interest rate lock of three point nine nine percent through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Third grader will have a fixed rate of four point five five percent locked through October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two with an annual payment. Of thirty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars, twenty-eight cents. The formal Columbia Bank financing agreement will be submitted to the B O C C board for review and approval at a later date.
And I'll second the motion. I fell asleep.
A long motion. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any question or comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, public defender.
I thought we're out, just waiting your turn.
I'm awake, I'm here. Good morning, Commissioners. Mr. Wilson, ladies and gentlemen, Luke Hagelberg for Susie Jensen on behalf of the Bonner County Public Defender's Office. Today I thought I had one item for you, but apparently I have two. We'll start with the easier one. It is a contract before you. For a first level conflict public defender agreement with Dana Bowles, uh, who resides here in Bonner County. Essentially, we had someone from Lewiston driving up to handle our conflicts. Doesn't make much sense. We have a local woman. Who's been practicing law and wants to take that over, so we're asking for your permission for her to step in and, and handle this conflict. We not due to the Idaho rules of professional conduct.
Mr. Chairman, I move the county to approve the contractor services of conflict public defender first level conflict. Two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two for Dana Bowles.
Second that. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any question or comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You gotta do the second one? Those passes. You gotta do the second one?
I I spoke on this on the phone last week and she needed to go ahead with it, so I apologize for stepping on her toes.
No, I would like you to step up.
Okay. Basically what this is is uh we're contacted by Boundary County. Um, they are having a very difficult time providing uh public defense services in their jurisdiction. Um, they just don't have the attorneys there who are able to do so. That they've been under contract with public attorneys now for a while and those seconded both. Right. And so they contacted us. There is a statute that allows for counties to work either through a joint powers agreement or for one county contract for those services with a neighboring county. And that's the the latter option is what we propose to to work with Boundary County in that way. Uh, we have a very um, we have a good public defender's office um that would be capable of providing uh those services in Boundary County. Um, of course, they would have to pay us for that to net that out. Um, but we were willing to provide that for them if the appropriate uh agreement could be reached. That's what's before you today. Um, the proposal is that Banner Boundary County would pay us two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year in quarterly installments. Um, it would uh increase at a uh three percent per year, just basically matching that budget increase that they would provide. Um, and we would then in turn hire one additional attorney and a support person um and promise to provide them with the same sort of public defense that we already provide down here. Uh, we would uh send or have somebody in person at all hearings up there. They would have small office in the courthouse where that public defender could could work for the day. Um, and we, the the reason that we need this this be approved before this fall can get rolling is that we need to advertise for that position for the expert attorney. Uh, there's a provision in the agreement that says uh it's gonna go away if we cannot hire that person because hiring help has been very difficult. So there are some contingencies there. Um, another limitation is that we, this doesn't include capital defense cases because those those are the ones where definitely it is, I'll get it most great. So, uh, we've worked on this with um the civil council up in Boundary County, that's Tethys Hall. And we've also met with um two of the commissioners from Boundary County to talk about some wrinkles that we needed to iron out before we got this set up. Um, but it's uh us doing Boundary County is solid and hoping to be able to provide the constitutional public defense that that they do, that they are required to provide, us helping stepping into that role. That you have a board.
Again, I think Luke could have done a few words.
Is this me or you? Do you want me to? Yeah, I can.
I just anticipate trying to head on. I mean, this is not something we've done before.
Right.
And people might have questions about how this is gonna work, so I just wanted to get ahead of that and provide the framework.
It shouldn't cost us money. That's.
That's the key.
That's, there you go.
Mr. Chairman, based on information before us, I move for the board of board to approve the service agreement providing engine defense services in Boundary County and for the chairman to sign the agreement administratively.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Any question or comment? Kendra.
Kendra Martin, for the record. So there, Boundary County would be paying Bonner County two hundred and fifty thousand?
Correct.
Okay. I I know I'm on the wrong side of this. Um, is the two hundred and fifty thousand, would that be to, that that would be the pay that you'd pay? Be paying somebody or, I mean, that's a, that seems like a lot of money, but it may not be. I don't know.
Right. I anticipate it would go towards a number. So it would be an attorney, possibly an assistant. Also, of course, medical, dental, all that good stuff.
Okay.
It's also.
Okay.
But our public defender's office is in the process of um renting more space for an additional person. So there's gonna be.
Okay.
Administrative costs as well.
Okay.
Um, I think there's also gonna be, we anticipate um having to purchase a vehicle because there's gonna be that public.
Transportation.
Travel there all the time.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's it's if they're paying public defenders two hundred and fifty.
Oh, I can speak a little bit because I've been in on this from for about, I don't know, six months at least. And then he'll came in, thank goodness, and wrote up the MOU. Um, yeah, the a car is a um part of it. Um, these are funds that they're getting through the mostly through the grant and then some of it is taxpayer money from Boundary County. Um, the whole idea is obviously for this not to cost Bonner County anything, but to actually um provide an attorney, maybe an attorney and a half, and with the proper structure and and supervision um actually help Bonner County cover their caseload also. So it's 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 just working together to try to to cover all the different things that need to be covered through the two counties. And then it does help out Boundary because they've been struggling to do higher contracts, so.
This is currently being done in Southern Idaho. I believe it's Minnie and Cassia.
Yeah, I think there's three of them.
Right. It appears to be going very well, so we're kind of following their leaders.
Smaller county struggle um with public defense, but I mean, I think that um with Suzie in there, Luke in there, they can organize this thing to where it benefits us. Um, we can, we can position our attorneys um wherever needed.
So one other point that might um is that we work with Tethys to um put a determination clause in there that was acceptable for both of them. And I think so on a hundred and twenty days.
Correct.
So um if for some reason this isn't working out or it's not for either party's um issue, then we can walk away from it with a hundred and twenty day notice and that will get them time to try to make. So it is a little, it's it's not something we've done before, but we're we're hopeful it'll work. And if not, we, there is a way to heartways and.
Yeah, all right. You're about to make a motion based on the information before us.
Didn't I make?
Yeah, we already made the motion. Is there any other question or comment?
You made a motion.
I did.
Yeah.
But it was a while ago.
Yeah. See none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, thanks. And Bill, okay, Cindy.
Uh, Cindy Pinkard, HR Director, for the record, and morning Commissioners. Uh, we have uh uh for today, we're requesting uh uh, the approval to recruit for the following positions. There's three for the Treasurer's Office, Audit Appropriations Clerk, Senior Account Clerk, Accounting Assistant Three, and then for the Assessor, Commercial Appraiser. And overall, they give.
Now you can go, Steve.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve convincing with recruitment for Audit Appropriations Clerk, Senior Account Clerk, Accounting Assistant Three, Treasurer, Commercial Appraiser, and Assessor effective July twenty-six, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second. Any question or comment? See none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. And it's uh ten eighteen and we'll go ahead and recess for five minutes and then come back with executive decisions. Huh?
Yeah, exactly. It was a, that was definitely a struggle.